There's Samir. Okay, cool. All right. So let's have a roll call vote to call this meeting to order. Jonathan?
Jonathan.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery here.
Maryla Chappelle?
Maryla Chappelle here.
And Cindy Krasinski here. Okay, well, welcome to our October 27th School Committee meeting. And Dr. Leclerc, do you have any announcements?
I do. I do have a few announcements this evening. So since our last School Committee meeting, we have welcomed back special programs, preschool and some of our special programs, preschool and kindergarten all to the high school. Kindergarten began this week and we have been overjoyed to see young people in our high school. It's been really quite the treat. And even the high school principal and assistant principal have been out there welcoming the students at a physically distanced, safe space. But we're happy to see students in our schools again. So so far, everything is working well, that I've been told. And, you know, we're working out some hiccups, but I think that teachers are doing a tremendous job and shout out to the teachers and to the staff that they have assisting them. Also, at the end of this week, I just want to let everyone know that we'll be having our ceremonial groundbreaking finally for the new school. This was originally planned back in March. We had wanted to do it, but due to COVID, it was delayed. And it has been delayed for several months. And I know that the building is really taking shape now, but we wanted to celebrate this milestone. So we really wanted to have this ceremonial groundbreaking. It is not open to the public, unfortunately, due to COVID. We have to really restrict the number of people that we have at the event. But we will have East Hampton Media there. We will have the newspaper there. I know Pat Ruff will bring his camera. He'll be taking pictures. So we look forward to that and we will share out pictures and the video from that celebration on Friday. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
And the only announcement I have to make is that we will be going into executive session after this meeting to conduct bargaining with the teachers' union. And we will be adjourning from that executive session. So we will not be returning here. Okay, now I'm going to open it up to public speak. And I request that people remember that we are trying to keep to a three-minute limit. So is there anybody who would like to talk? I will be scrolling through and we'll be letting you in. Public speak start now. I'm looking. Right now, I'm not seeing anybody. Going once. Going twice. Marissa, do you see anybody? I see no one. Please raise your hand or text. Okay. All righty. Well, then we are going to go on. We're going to close public speak and go on with the meeting. Okay, subcommittee updates. Should we start with policy?
Sorry about that. We had to postpone our meeting last week. Our next meeting is going to be November 4th.
November 4th, okay. And Maren? Finance?
We have not met.
Okay. And Jonathan, the collaborative?
Nothing from the collaborative. This other piece might have actually been better suited for announcements, so sorry about that. But reporting out from East Hampton Media, I just wanted to let everybody out there know that they did extend the deadline for submitting for the ragshag video until tomorrow. So if you haven't done that, absolutely, it can just be a still picture. It can be a video if that's what you prefer. Send it on over to ryan@easthamptonmedia.org. You can find an email on our website as well. And that'll be out in time for the weekend.
Okay. And Lori, do you have any update?
The COVID response team did meet last week. I don't have anything specific to say. I just want to remind our community that we're so fortunate to have an epidemiologist who is with us to provide constant updates on many different strands of metrics that we can rely on. So I'm not sure if Superintendent Leclerc wants to post what she shares with us. It's up to you, the weekly updates of the metrics and how she sees it.
I can I can ask Megan if she's comfortable with me doing that.
Because I think it's very important for the community to know and to understand that it's not just the School Committee. We are working with not only an epidemiologist, we are working with our city health department. We are working with a pediatrician. We have health professionals to help guard our decisions to keep this community safe. And we are very fortunate for that. So I thank everyone involved.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Then let's go on to discuss MCAS testing. Dr. Leclerc?
I think it was Marissa wanted to do a letter.
Yes. So Maren wisely proposed this a couple of weeks ago, and we've been working together, putting together a draft about requesting that the state place a moratorium on the MCAS testing for this academic year. The most recent announcement coming from the Education Commissioner suggested that MCAS would continue as usual and be administered this spring. So we are obviously concerned about that. And we fished around a little bit to see if any other districts had already published something along these lines, but didn't find anything. So we have here a rough draft. We're very happy to gain the input of the rest of the committee. And then also, we got a little bit of clarification from Dr. Leclerc this morning that the state has not yet been released by the federal government from its requirement to conduct standardized testing. So there's sort of like two levels of advocacy that need to happen. First, the state needs to petition the federal government to waive the requirement. And then the state additionally needs to be on board with waiving the requirement if it does indeed get that reprieve. So I don't know. I shared the draft earlier today. I don't know if I should read it out loud or how we want to proceed.
I would recommend going ahead and reading it, Marissa, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I think so.
No, thank you. Sure. Okay.
I'm pulling it up, but it's good.
All right. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit of a little child here in my ear. All right. We, the elected members of the East Hampton School Committee, resolve our opposition to MCAS testing for the academic year 2021 in response to the COVID-19 emergency, which has caused an unprecedented disruption to every aspect of publication and to the lives of students across the Commonwealth. In making this resolution, we consider the following background. On March 10, 2020, Governor Charlie Baker ordered the closure of all elementary and secondary schools extending through June 29, 2020, requiring districts to move abruptly to remote learning without appropriate training or resources. Since the initial order, Massachusetts public school districts have not been adequately provided access to the COVID-19 testing and contract tracing necessary for local districts to manage or contain outbreaks in short order. The state has also not provided risk assessment tools or funding to retrofit facilities to open safely for in-person schooling and to meet safety recommendations as communicated by Massachusetts Commissioner of Education Riley. Consequently, for the 2020-2021 academic year, 99% of Massachusetts schools opened in fully remote or hybrid models without adequate provision of remote educational tools from the state. Even as districts are working to develop their remote educational capacities, significant numbers of Massachusetts students struggle to access remote learning due to obstacles, including access to internet, access to technological devices, access to an appropriate environment for learning, and availability of in-person adult support to facilitate remote learning platforms and activities. Additionally, Massachusetts students are experiencing documented stress, anxiety, trauma, and other mental health challenges in significantly higher degrees than is normal as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. With this background in mind, we oppose the implementation of MCAS testing for the following reasons. MCAS testing during the COVID-19 pandemic puts an additional burden on public school systems that are already overwhelmed by the task of delivering education in the unprecedented context of an ever-shifting pandemic. MCAS testing during the COVID-19 pandemic puts additional pressure on public school educators, who are already overtasked in meeting the individuated and highly varied needs of students learning during a pandemic. In-person MCAS testing during the COVID-19 pandemic poses extraordinary challenge for districts to execute, given the obstacles in ensuring appropriate facilities and staffing. In-person MCAS testing during the COVID-19 pandemic poses a health risk to families who have otherwise elected remote-only schooling. MCAS testing during the COVID-19 pandemic puts additional stress on students, who are already challenged to adapt to learning under the conditions of the pandemic. MCAS testing during the COVID-19 pandemic exacerbates inequities for student populations that are already overly affected by the pandemic, including students of color, students living in poverty, and students with disabilities, as it is documented that high-stakes testing results in disproportionate amount of time spent in test prep for these populations. MCAS testing this year cannot provide an accurate relative measure of students' progress or district improvement, given MCAS testing was vacated in spring 2020 by Commissioner Riley due to the pandemic. An MCAS testing costs the state of Massachusetts approximately $30 million annually and likely will cost more to administer under the conditions of COVID-19 during a time in which public funds are urgently needed to address the myriad costs associated with educating during a pandemic. In conclusion, while the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has announced that MCAS testing will occur, quote, "as usual," we are in a public health and budgetary crisis in which no element of public education is able to function as usual. The most urgent priority for Massachusetts' public school systems operating during this pandemic is to promote health, safety, well-being, and learning opportunities for each of its students. Therefore, we, the elected members of the East Hampton School Committee, urge the governor, the legislature, and the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education Jeffrey Riley to petition on behalf of the Massachusetts public school system for a reprieve from federal requirements for standardized testing and to institute a moratorium on MCAS testing for the school year 2020, 2021.
Wow. I want to thank Maren and Marissa for that letter. It is really well written. Thank you very much. Lori? You're unmute. Okay.
I applaud you both for working so diligently on such a phenomenal letter. The only thing that I can add would be the actual logistics, which make no sense this year. I know you worded many things leading towards that, but I'm not sure. Maybe I missed it to actually state that during a pandemic this year, we don't know who will be in school, who will be in hybrid, who will be remote. And students who are remote or in hybrid, first of all, the time that MCAS take away, we are already having to slow down on curriculum and teaching, and it takes away more time so that... And in addition to that, as I stated, the logistics of giving an exam on Chromebooks that have faulty connections. So maybe you could add something like that. But other than that, once again, thank you so much for such a phenomenal letter, Maren and Marissa.
Yeah.
Yeah. It really is phenomenal. And it seems to me just so crazy to even be considering MCAS this year. It really does. I just do not understand what anybody's thinking.
Well, and I just want to make clear to everybody here. I certainly say I had put forward the concept, but I want to really thank Marissa as the real key author to writing that. She did a wonderful job putting it all together. We touched base a couple of times, but this really was... Marissa really put it down to paper and did a phenomenal job. So thank you so much, Marissa, for doing that lift.
Thank you, Maren. I'm wondering if the mayor might be able to weigh in on sort of the best way to navigate it politically. You know, it sounds like the first step needs to happen at the federal level, but I'm not even sure how much our Massachusetts leadership is interested in petitioning in that direction.
You're muted.
Nicole, you're muted.
You're muted there.
Um, every time I unmute myself...
You probably said something really good.
I know, I did. And every time, I just think, oh, I'm unmuting myself. And there are like 16,000 people out there, wish they could do that to me every day. So, um, the letter is fantastic. It's heartfelt. It's really meaty. I've been thinking about the federal connection. If I could... My suggestion is to write it to Secretary Peiser and copy our federal delegation. They're very interested in this. And then with very little, you know, to start there. And then also, write a letter to our two state, our two federal senators, Warren and Margie, and then Congressman Neal. And when I say that, like the one letter, and you just do a quick cover letter over it saying, you know, Congressman Neal, this is, you know, it's a grave, you know, threat to the wellness of our community and, you know, is not the assessment, you know, whatever. I mean, the language is there in the letter. And send it off that way. But I do think that the state, the Secretary Peiser really needs to get the letter with a copy to our federal legislature. So there's a very direct line of the secretary understanding what we're looking for and that the federal delegation understands that we're in conversation with the state.
The other thing that I would put out there too, I mean, I think you're very correctly, you're saying that we should focus that letter and how to do that, Mayor. I think the other thing that I would recommend, maybe even before we, possibly after we approve it from here, but then even before we sort of put it out to those different delegations, is to send it around to other Pioneer Valley school committees and the state school committee body, asking for others to pass similar resolutions and sign on so that we can not just be coming from one school committee, but try to build a momentum that we'd all be sending that out. So I would put forward that we still sort of can approve that as a body tonight and then put it forward to other school committees across the region and across the state to sign on. And then we can try to make it a bigger momentum when it does actually get sent to those different elected officials.
Great plan. Was that awesome?
I was just going to add that I was on a conference call with the Commissioner of Education earlier today. And of course, superintendent's asked about MCAS. And his response was that the current Secretary of Education, Secretary DeVos, has made it clear that she will not be giving out a waiver to states at this time. But there, you know, there is an election next week, in case you haven't heard, that could, that could change things, you know? So one way or another, you know, you know, if she is still in that role, she may have a different feeling after the election. I don't know. So, but without the waiver issued from the federal level, the states are powerless to do any of the next steps. So that's, that's, you know, the message that he relayed to us earlier today. So I just wanted to share that.
So we can all hope a different election results happen. But I think that...
We can all vote.
Yes, everybody should go vote.
Upstairs.
Not that Massachusetts is not going to certainly go in one direction, but I still think that that gives us time to actually still move forward with, with trying to build some valid, some momentum among other school committees across the valley and across the state. So that possibly by the time we possibly have a new secretary in January, then we would have this all momentum already built, that then that information would go to that person and sit on their desk to get that federal approval.
So I'm thinking I really would like that letter to be out at least by early December. Does that sound reasonable? I mean, I'd love it to be out earlier so that we can build some of that momentum.
What we... Letter to the federal...
The letter everywhere, as far as I'm concerned, because this is just bizarre that we're even thinking about it.
Well, I think that what I would recommend is that, is that if we could approve that, prove it tonight, I think we can do that, that this is something that we're taking a stand on. And then what we would do, the first, the next step would be to send around to other school committees and our state school committee body, saying, this is something we've approved and voted on within our school committee, and we advocate for everybody else to join us. And these are the, the following step after that is going to try to build momentum and send it to our federal delegation, hoping to send it at the end of the year, the new year, what have you. But I think we can do that, those two different steps tonight.
I agree. I agree. Okay. So...
Do I make a motion?
Yeah.
I can make a motion to put forth the resolution that has been presented to us.
Do we have a second? Good. Good. Okay. Any more discussion about it? I think it's still well-written. I don't think, I couldn't tweet it at all. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Maryla Chappelle?
Maryla Chappelle, aye.
Mute myself. Am I muted? Did you hear my aye? Am I okay now?
Uh huh.
I suddenly saw you're muted, and I had no idea why. Okay. Excellent.
I will take on that next step then. I will, I will, I can take that piece on since Marissa did the heavy lift with the writing, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm excited for it. So Dr. Leclerc, our next item is the EEA letter.
Yes. So I received a letter from the East Hampton Education Association last week via email. And it was sent to me to give me a heads up. And it was sent to the community, I think, but I'm not sure who in the community received it. I know it was sent to the newspaper. So that's one I know for sure. So this evening, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the letter and discuss the letter a little bit. This is a result... Every time I start talking, the phone rings. I'm sorry. Every time. This letter is, I think, the result of some frustration on the part of the union around negotiations. And I think it's fair to say that, and I don't want to speak for the union, but I think it's fair to say that, that our side is very frustrated over the, the time spent working on negotiations over an MOA with the union. It is, it's exhausting. And I don't feel as though we're accomplishing a great deal. But to have a letter put out to the community was really a step that I felt was very disheartening from a negotiation standpoint. The letter, and I don't know, it's, it's not signed by anyone. I'm assuming it's from the entire negotiations team. And I think all of you, were you all sent a copy of the letter originally? Let me start with that. Yes. And I wrote a response to each one of the sections. And so I'd like to just talk for a few minutes about the major areas that they bring up in the letter. And so I will start, because I feel as though they've had their opportunity through the press to state their case. And I think that there's another side to the issue. So I'm hoping that we can discuss that this evening. So their first issue is around bargaining the MOA. They have asked for marathon sessions to work on the memorandum of agreement. And I think that for the members of the School Committee that are working on this, we have had several marathon sessions, beginning in the summer, when we did this during the day, because teachers have more flexibility in the summer. And then when the school year begins and teachers and other members of the union are working during the day, including members of the negotiation team on our side, we start the negotiations at 3:30. And I think that it's fair to say, it's not unusual for us to finish at eight, nine o'clock at night sometimes. Sometimes they're shorter, but we do have some marathon sessions. I did put forward a proposal on behalf of the School Committee Negotiation Team to the President of the EEA a few weeks ago. And I said, I would work on a day-long session with one other person, my business manager, and they could have the union president and one other member, so that we could try and hammer it out, just four people in a room all day long, and really try to work through some issues and then, then come to a meeting and make some real progress. The union president said no to that proposal. So I was taken aback when I read that the first issue was that we're not willing to have marathon negotiation sessions, because I think we've, we have actually made a proposal about a marathon session. We've made ourselves available for several long-hour sessions. And I think that from my perspective, both sides have had challenges around scheduling. I think that sometimes it doesn't work out. There are a lot of other... I will speak for the negotiation side that I work on, the school committee side. We have school committee meetings. We have policy subcommittees. We have finance subcommittees. We have COVID response committee meetings. Just about every night of my week is booked a lot of times. So trying to find common ground is a challenge, but on their side as well. So I was a little taken aback by that being an allegation that we were not working on that, on that behalf. So that was the first one, and that's my response to that. The second one was around being transparent. They're saying that they need health and safety data. They also expect to know if anyone in the school community tests positive. They want contact tracing and quarantining. So my response to that has been that the, the Phase One report of the general assessment of all of our buildings has been shared on our website. It's there for public information. I've shared it with the union president. I've shared it with the School Committee. I've not kept that away from any, anyone. As far as protocols for notifying people when we have, we have a COVID response team in place. And on that COVID response team, that Lori Garcia already articulated, all the medical personnel on that committee. But I also would say that the union president sits on that committee, as do the school district nurses, who are both union members. So there is union representation on that committee. And that committee has worked to review the protocols and practices that we have around COVID response. So I was a little taken aback about being transparent, since there are members of their own committee that are sitting on COVID response teams. And actually, I will go further and say, our district nurses have developed extensive protocols that they have shared out to the community. They're on our website. And so we have all those practices in place. So I am surprised by our lack of transparency. We follow MIAA guidance for our athletics, and they have COVID response practices in place. So we are following all the rules. If we have someone with a positive test case, then we do not notify the entire school community. There are HIPAA regulations in place. There are protocols we are supposed to follow around close contacts, around notifying the Board of Health, and we're doing... around close contacts, around notifying the board of health, and we're doing all of that. And so I am, I am again surprised by the second complaint that the union has about being transparent. The third complaint from the union is communicating with staff. They want staff to be fully informed about what's going on and what is expected of them before information is put out more broadly to the community. Staff feel that they are not in the loop. I would argue that in many cases, I, I communicate with staff. I went through my emails. I think I've done at least, I've, I've done a few since last time I looked, but I would say at least 12 to 13 emails directed extensively, exclusively to staff, video messages, that sort of thing. But also, building administrators communicate with staff on daily messages every day, at staff meetings. Do we send out information to families and staff simultaneously? Yes, sometimes we do because the administrators are busy and it's easier on an email to hit both groups at once than to send out two emails. Might not seem like a lot, but you know, they're doing a lot of messaging during the day. I would say that really reflecting on this, we could all probably do better with communication, but I think that what I would remind everyone of is when we are dealing with COVID, we are dealing with a very fluid situation. Information that we shared in two months ago may not be relevant today. The situation changes, staffing changes, conditions change. So it is a very fluid situation. We're constantly getting new information from the government. We're getting new information from our board of health that we have to incorporate and update our messaging. So it's always changing. I, I and I think that for all of us administrators, and I have asked this of people before, I think a level of grace is required during all of this. Our administrators are in the buildings. They're available. They talk to staff all the time extensively. They have team-level meetings. They have staff meetings. They pop into classes, even if they're virtual. So they're approachable and they're around. And their fourth and final complaint is around what they call being nimble. If some protocols don't work, the district must communicate with staff immediately and get input to do things better. The community should expect that situations will change and I, my and they're, they're also talking about the metrics that we use. The management team, the negotiations management team, my response is that we are very nimble throughout this process and have sought staff input when appropriate. The staff, I would remind the union, was invited to participate in every back-to-school committee that was held this summer. We met all through the summer. The staff also sits on the COVID response team. Union members are with building administration regularly and they voice concerns and brainstorm solutions. We have yet to come to an agreement with the association around metrics for closing our program. And this is frustrating, I think, on many levels for me, for my administrators, I think for the parents in the community, even probably for the, the union. The association put forth a proposal initially. We did not agree. We put forth a proposal. We thought we had tentative agreement on it, but then last week, the association put forth a brand-new proposal with new metrics. I don't feel they were based on any evidence from health experts. They were rather from another school district. The metrics did not allow us to return to school at this current time. And we have, we have agreed to the formula, but we have countered that we are seeking medical personnel to weigh in on the baseline number because I would like our data to be rooted in science and not an arbitrary number. And so those are my responses from the union side. And, and in conclusion, I would say to the union and to the community, you know, the team that is representing the school committee at bargaining is frustrated over the lack of progress we've made to date. And, and as probably the, the EEA is as well. We've tried tirelessly to meet in good faith all summer and weekly throughout the fall and have made little progress. The union has presented us with weekly lists that need to be addressed every time we get together. And during many sessions, we run out of time before we even address any section of the MOA. We have asked them to stop doing this practice and they did, they did stop doing that. However, after a recent negotiation session ended on a Wednesday night, after about a 13 or 14-hour day for all of us, they sent us a list of questions that they wanted addressed. It came in at 7:00 PM on a Wednesday night after what was already a 13 or 14-hour day. We began addressing the three pages of single-spaced questions the following morning, Thursday morning. On Friday morning, the EEA went to the press and accused management of not being transparent because we had not provided responses to all their questions. I provided all the responses to approximately 72 questions by early Friday afternoon. Finally, at last week's meeting, we provided, we were provided new metrics. And our frustration was that we thought we had already come to some agreement on this. The metrics that we were presented were complicated. I don't believe they were based on any sound medical recommendations and we spent almost three hours trying to reach some consensus on them. At this point, the school committee negotiations team feels as though we are going in, in circles and we are nearing an impasse. And I will stop speaking at this point and allow any of the other team members to voice any concerns that they might have or questions.
Shannon, you have a question?
I'm just curious, are these supposed to be conversations that we're having in executive session? Or is it okay for us to be speaking this freely?
I'm addressing a letter that the union sent out to the community at large. So because they submitted it to the community, I'm, I'm addressing a letter that they provided. So I don't believe, we've been advised by council that it does not need to be an executive session.
Okay, I, I was just, I'm sorry, I was just asking.
No, Shannon.
If they had not sent it to the community, that would be something different. Yeah.
It's a really good question, but the idea is that this was sent out publicly. And so we can, we can, we should be able to talk about it publicly. Maren, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, the superintendent already covered a lot of the different aspects of what's been going on and developing. We have been negotiating for four months. And I think that one of the pieces that, you know, we're, we're challenged to hold our community and our teachers and everyone's safety and needs all together as we're trying to develop our school plans and develop agreements of, with our teachers' union about how to do that safely. And I think that that's what we have certainly been coming to those meetings with a full desire to solve this as quickly as possible. And it has been going on for four months now. So I think that, I think, in my opinion, we're, we're, we are sort of reaching the, the end of opportunities to continue this conversation. I don't think it's done yet, but I think that, I, I think from my perspective too, I just think it's important for the community to understand what has been transpiring and some of the challenges that we've seen going in there and some of the sort of impossibility tasks that the union has put forward that we've had to negotiate over. And some of those stumbling blocks have really caused this process to go on for a very long time. But we are trying to get everything on the same page. We need the support of the community and we need the support of the union to really move this forward so that we can finalize something in short order. We are, most of the other communities are much further along in this process. And going to mediation isn't going to help the process at all find conclusion in short order. And so it is my hope through this, through this conversation tonight and our executive session to further it, to really recognize that we need to find resolution quickly at this point.
Marissa?
I was just wondering, obviously, we need to get an MOA in place so that way teachers know the conditions they're working under and the district knows how it's managing its operations. Could someone offer some clarification around how the delay in finalizing the MOA might be implicating potential returns to a hybrid model or something in the future? Is that a, a roadblock to having that possibility in the future?
Yes, yes. So I think that, you know, you've hit the nail on the head. And I think for the faculty, for the families in our district, without having some agreement on some aspects of our return to school, it's difficult to move forward. So things like, what are the health metrics? I have families asking me all the time, you know, what are the health metrics that we will use in order to either close school or, you know, move to the next level? We are constantly, you know, set up for a challenge with that. I think we have not come to an agreement on that. So that's an example that I think the, you know, the, the faculty would, would also agree. Like they would like to know as well. That's something that we need to have some agreement on or consensus on. I would give you another example, Marissa. You know, what will hybrid learning look like? Again, families ask that question. Faculty ask that question. So we need to have some agreement on what the expectations are when we come back more fully in a hybrid model. So those are two examples that I would give you about some of the stumbling blocks that are frustrating from the school committee negotiation side. I would imagine they're probably frustrating from the faculty side as well. And I can only guess from the emails that I receive and I think the school committee receives that it's, it's answers that the community would like as well. And so the, the longer this drags on, the more difficult it is for us to move forward.
And, and I would just add the piece. I mean, we are still trying to do, even without the agreement in place yet, we are trying to hold the standard high and that's why we have moved forward with special populations and with kindergarten within the, you know, the building that we have the most information about already and can feel confident and secure in the safety of the, in the health safety of that building being in the high school. And so we've adjusted, we've made, we've tried to enact the high standard that we're hoping that will come out of the MOU in the decisions we're already making. But of course, it would be best for everybody involved for those, for all the different details of that memorandum to be finalized and agreed upon. And so that we could be very clear and succinct then in what they actually are. Right now, they're open-ended and we're just trying to hold everything, all of our actions to a high standard without that memorandum in place.
Lori? Let me know if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding from other districts that if there is not an MOA in place, it is possible to return and then teachers are going back under the existing contracts. That's what I learned. So it's not like we can't move forward. I think people need to understand that. Am I right?
Yes, I believe you are correct.
But would that mean that teachers are operating under a contract that doesn't take into context the pandemic?
Yes, and that is forcing some districts to move forward with MOAs without having all the details worked out. Let me just say that. And I don't think that's good either.
No, that's why we have certainly been trying to work through the details and get things understood, get, you know, support, staff, funding, all those different pieces that they've been asking for, trying to bring it into parameters that work for everybody and work within our budget, work within our, you know, ability and with the really, again, the safety of mind for the whole community, students and teachers.
So I just wanted to give that update. I wanted to address that letter because I know it was out there and give a response from the negotiation team that is representing the school committee. So I will move on from that topic at this point.
I, I just wanted, before we move on, to back up what you said. I took notes while you were talking and your points are, were well-done. In terms of having meetings and trying as hard as we could, the team has been working diligently to make themselves available every single time we possibly could squeeze a minute. We have had many, 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 many made meetings for many, many, many hours in order to do this. And then in terms of the transparency, the fact that there are teachers, staff people on the COVID response team is a way of being transparent. Things are not being hidden. It is being shared with the district. And I just want to say that I think that we have tried at every school committee meeting, we have them every week, we've tried at every school committee meeting to give time for Dr. Leclerc to provide as much information as absolutely possible so that the staff would know. But I also know there's staff meetings and I don't know where the information is not getting to everybody, but I believe that we have tried our very best to be extremely transparent. Communication with staff, that I can't speak to. But I do know that there are a number of meetings where union members are at these team leader meetings and I hope that the information would be shared with everybody else. And the 72 questions that you got on a Thursday night and didn't have time to answer is extremely reasonable for you to get those answers out by Friday afternoon. That, I applaud you for that because 72 questions is a lot if you have nothing to do. And if you have to run a district and you have to work all day and squeeze that in, I find that commendable that you got that done that afternoon. So for my part, I would say that this district has tried to create the safest re-entry program we possibly could. And we have made ourselves available as much as possible to work with the union. And I hope that we get, we get an MOA, it's sometime soon, but we are, we are all getting tired and frustrated, but it is not through lack of trying. So that's my piece. Now, Dr. Leclerc, you want to move on?
Yeah. And what's the next thing on the agenda?
COVID response wellness updates.
Okay. So we are still working on the health metrics, as I pointed out. And Lori already gave a brief overview of our COVID response team that met last week. We are, we have students coming into the high school. Every student is filling out a screening form and that's happening every day. If they come to school without a screening form, If they come to school without a screening form, the nurse holds them inside the front, inside the door and calls the family up and goes through the screening questions on the phone before they're released to their classroom. So we are doing a lot related to screening. I do want to ask if, do I have the ability to share my screen? If you give me that ability, I will share with you some of the-
It's done.
It should be fine. Maren did it faster than I could.
Okay, so I want to share with you some survey results. And these are, that's not it, but it's something like that. Let's see. We've done a few surveys in the last few weeks related to bringing students back. And so I have a few up here. The first one I would point out is the remote learning survey.
You have the run screen, Al.
Yeah, I'm seeing a calendar and not your survey.
Okay, let me try it again. Let me stop sharing. Then let me try share. Yes, it should work. How's that?
There you go.
Okay. So this was our remote learning survey. I think that I shared with you last time. We would do a kind of a check to see how we're doing in remote learning. And I would share that with you. So the first item I point out is that we had 406 responses. It was pretty well distributed amongst all four of our schools. And when we get to responses, we have a lot of varying responses about what is working well for families. Can you see that when I click more detail?
Yes.
People are very complimentary of the teachers, the schedule, the Zoom classes. And people are feeling good about what we have put forward for remote learning. I think it's very clear that remote learning in East Hampton looks very different than it did in the spring. It's much more refined. The teachers have been working very hard on adapting their lessons for a remote learning world. And so we just had a lot of positive feedback. I think, I, I think staff have gone really above and beyond working with families, working with students, dealing with any struggles that come up. They've really just tried to address them. So, and I can share all this with all of you after. For what parts of remote learning are not working well? Some of the same things, actually. You know, people have connectivity issues. Sometimes the, the little nuanced programs like Freckle and Epic, those are elementary programs. Sometimes families can struggle with them. We have drop-in family technology hours with Dreah Marks, our technology instructor. So people sometimes go to those to get assistance. Obviously, you're going to see some feedback in here. For the youngest students, being on a computer for a large part of the day is challenging. It's very challenging. And so families are struggling with that. Sometimes people are challenged by the amount of work that students have. Some people are looking for some asynchronous days. I would caution, I met with the middle school staff yesterday and I said to them, asynchronous days look very different or, or they're, they feel different for high school students than they do for little ones. I think if you're the parent of a first grader, a day without any teacher guidance, a day just to do kind of lessons on your own, might be very challenging for a first grader. But for a high school student who's much more self-directed, it can be a, a nice day. You know, you can kind of make your own schedule. So and, and people are challenged when they have children with IEPs. That's a theme that we see on here. And trying to navigate having multiple children in remote learning is also a challenge. Let me go on in the survey. As remote learning continues, what would you like to see more of? People are looking for more synchronous group learning, more asynchronous assignments. And we can break that down further by grade level. And then other, I don't think I can open that. I have to open it this way. Independent study, group work, classroom parents taking on a role, less homework, community-based in-person with masks. I think people are also looking for opportunities for their child to engage with other children. More synchronous group learning, more asynchronous, so it's across the board in a few different, a few different ways. What technology are you using? Some of our families are using personal devices, about 36%. And the majority of our families are using district, district-issued Chromebooks. What are you having trouble with? Check all that apply. This is the other category. I think people are having trouble with Wi-Fi is a challenge. It's, it seems to be a challenge in East Hampton. I don't know. I think some of it is where you live in town. But that seems to be an ongoing issue for families. And then the question, are you interested in transitioning to a hybrid model for your children at this time? Right off the bat, 51% said yes. And 34, 34% said no. And 15% said they're not sure. So somewhere between 50 and 65% of families are interested in a hybrid model right now. So that's one survey I wanted to share. And then you had asked me to begin gauging first grade interests. Now, we're not taking a vote on that tonight necessarily, but you asked me to try and just kind of get the feel from first grade families if they are interested in moving in that direction. So I put out a survey. Can you see this survey? Okay. To date, I have 97 responses. And 61 from Center Peppin, 36 from Maple. I think there's, you know, there's maybe 40 first graders at Maple. So we're missing just a handful of children in each building. We've separated out by their cla, by their classroom teacher. If he, health metrics were to allow us to return to a hybrid model, would your child participate? Again, 52% said yes. And then 32% said not sure at this time. So somewhere between 50 and 80% are interested in a hybrid model right now. And that's without even understanding what the health metrics are that we would be choosing. And then if you're unsure, what information might we provide to you? A lot of people want to know what the health metrics are that we would be using, what the model would look like, where we would hold first grade classes. Those are all, you know, legitimate questions people have, you know, what does, what will the teacher be doing? How will that look? What about the children that stay home? How will that look? So again, getting back to all those negotiated points that we're working on with the union. But this is where we are. I think that we have consistently shown in every survey that we've done since the summer, that the majority of our families are interested in coming back to school in person. They really are looking for that experience for their child. So that's what I just, I wanted to share that with you. And, you know, I can share these both out with you so you can look at them in more detail.
Laurie had a question.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Yes, you're going quickly. And do you want us to hold our questions to the end?
No, I have to go ahead.
Questions, okay. Because I'm concerned about all the families that are unsure. And I don't think that the, the lack of answers is just because of the MOA. I think the lack of answers exists because it's impossible to do things in a safe way. I know we've received emails from parents that before deciding if they would send their children back in kindergarten, they wanted to know how the day would transpire. And they didn't have answers to all their questions. And they decided it was safer to keep their children home. And I agree with them if they didn't have the answers. So we have to work together as a school committee to answer questions so people will think that it's safe, but we have to be sure that it will be safe. One of the questions I know that comes up throughout the Commonwealth is how students are going to eat and where they're going to eat and who's going to be responsible when they unmask and who cleans up after. So that's a concern for any type of day that would involve eating. And also, parents have the concern if they opt not to go hybrid now and then they decide that they want to, do they have to wait until February? And we had decided yes because of staffing and I can understand those issues. But I just know that there's concern that we're all of a sudden, you know, talking about bringing back more grades and the parents that didn't feel comfortable then feel left out if they can't get their kids back into a safe situation. So I just want to bring that up, that all of these unsure's have to be there, they're unsure because we don't have the answers and it's not just the MOA.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I think some of that is the MOA. And I think some of it is the building, you know, where, where we are located. I think some of it is the actual physical building. And I think some of it is the, the staffing, as you mentioned, you know. I don't know where the February piece came from. I saw that in an email today too, but I don't think we said that. I think what we've said is that, and, and let me just say it and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. And maybe Sue Colby can, can look through the notes if we're not sure. I think that we had said in, in one of our earlier discussions that if a child, if a family chooses not to have their child return in a hybrid model, they want to keep them home, then, you know, if they decide a week later, oh, well, I changed my mind, it seems to be okay. We said they might have to wait a few weeks or up to the change in term. Because we need to allow for adjustments in, we need to plan. We need to staff correctly. We need to make sure, you know, in this case, when we're using the high school, we're, we're moving furniture into that building. So we physically need to get the, all the, all the equipment that we need if we add more kids to that building. It's not like we can steal a desk from another room. We're moving little people desks into that building. So there does require some time. And I'll give you an example of that specifically in which we had to do that. We had one, in one of our special programs, we had the group that was going to be returning was one staff member, one teacher with X number of staff members and X number of students. A few days before the start of the program, a family that had said no, changed their mind and said yes. And that child required a one-on-one. And we said, well, wait a minute. We're going to need two weeks in order to, you know, make sure that we get the appropriate staffing. We had to change all our staffing configuration because bringing in a child that required so much additional support, it's not that we didn't want them. We wished we could have taken them the next day. It's just that we had, you know, some things we needed to put in place, transportation, all of those things. So, you know, so I, I don't know where the February came from.
I don't know either, but I, I just want the community to know that we are all working so hard. Dr. Leclerc is working hard. The school committee has not stopped working since this pandemic started. We read everyone's emails. And once again, we do not have the time to answer everyone's emails, but we are reading them. And that's why I am now referring to some of the questions that have come up. And we care about all of your concerns. We care about the concerns of the parents that want their kids back in the buildings. We understand that people need to feel safe. And I can tell you, no matter what we decide, we cannot make everybody happy. It is absolutely impossible. There is not one district in this country that can make everybody happy. And we are doing our best. And it is so disheartening when we get emails from disgruntled parents who criticize us because we ultimately have to take care of everybody. We have to take care of the students, make sure they are learning. We have to take care of our teachers and make sure that they, they do not get sick and die. And we are listening to you. We read everything. So if we don't answer, just know that we're considering every aspect. And once again, to hear that people, some people are very appreciative and we appreciate that you are. But the people that aren't, we value what you say, but we can't always resolve everything. So I just had to say that because I'm a very sensitive person and I care. And so to hear that we're not doing our job when we haven't stopped doing our job. I had to make a public statement. So thank you.
I would also suggest, and, and you, you brought up something else. Lunch, you brought up, Laurie. And I think that was in an email that we saw recently as well. So our kindergartners are in school all day, two days a week. And they're having lunch at the high school. And we met as a team. We walked around the building. And we decided that we brought little desks up, extra little desks, and they're in the cafeteria. They are all six feet apart, so every child has their own little desk in that area. There is a lunch monitor that we've hired to be there with the children. We have one lunch period. We have all the children in there because remember, there's only about 25 or 30 children and that's a large, large area. And so they're all spread out and they have their little lunch. And then that way they're not unmasking when they're in the classroom and the teachers can have their lunch in the classrooms. So, you know, I would, I would say that if people have specific questions like that, like say, how will lunch work, I wonder, you know, or what's it like when I drop my child off? I would reach out to the classroom teacher and ask the question. I would reach out to the building principal and ask the question if you don't get a response from the classroom teacher because they have the information, you know, or, or they're, they're working on it with us and they can tell you what we're considering. You know, as members of the school committee, you might not have all those pieces of information. And, you know, when we put out a survey like this, we don't have all the answers yet. We're trying to gauge interest to see, are we going to have 30 kids? Are we going to have a quarter of the population that wants to be in person? Or are we going to have 75% of the population that wants to be in person? Because that's going to change our plans a little bit, you know? So that's the kind of thing. This is just kind of the first wave of our, of our, what are people thinking? So that's all I would put out there.
And the other thing that I want to put out there is that it's impossible to have all the information now. As you open up to a small population and put them in the high school, it's a learning curve. So you'll begin with what you think is a doable procedure and then it's- And then it's important that teachers and students and administrators talk to each other. Parents should email if they have a concern um, so that we can adjust. But you can't possibly, when you first get these, these groups together and you think you've got everything lined up, you're always going to have to tweak it a little. And it's going to be really important that parents and teachers and um, administrators just communicate with each other so you can make those adjustments. It can't possibly be figured out all at once, Marissa.
Um, now that our kindergartners have started, can you um, tell us a little bit about what that model looks like? Cause I imagine it probably would be similar um, for the first grade. What does it look like in terms of like, um, are we operating with two cohorts? What's hap, how are the teachers managing? Are they teaching in-person and remote at the same time? Or what, who are the students, how are students who are at home interacting with the teacher? Could you speak to some of that?
So um, yes, we initially thought that we might have um, some kindergarten teachers that would be fully remote and some would be in-person. And because we started fully remote, that would mean um, reassigning students. So some students that wanted to be fully remote would be assigned to the fully remote teacher. Um, however, the um, the kindergarten teachers expressed they didn't, they didn't want children reassigned. Um, and um, I wasn't part of those meetings, so I can't, I, I, I don't want to paraphrase, paraphrase what they said. But I think it's safe to say that teachers in the district spent a lot of time at the beginning of the school year working on building community in their classrooms and they really valued it so much. And you know, this is a different virtual environment. So um, they all kept their own classes. And so all six kindergarten teachers are teaching at the high school. They have both their um, remote students and their hybrid students. So they have cohorts, we call them cohort A, B, and C. Um, so they have all three of their groups, meaning cohort C is the group that's fully remote, no matter what. And A and B are two days each. Um, uh, they're teaching with a mask on. And so they're, you know, the high school is outfitted with the large screens in the front of the room. Um, I have been up there, I was there yesterday morning when the kindergartners arrived. They were very excited um, to come in. They all have their little masks on. Um, they've got their lunch boxes, you know, they're all coming in, their backpacks, they go up, you know, they wash their hands. They go up the stairs, you know, in a single file, they go into their rooms. Um, I am trying to stay out of classrooms because of our visitor policy. I am an outsider, so I am really trying to limit the amount of time I'm in the building. The um, but all the other administrators in the district are taking turns in the building. Not central office people, but all of the, you know, Maple, Center, um, Pepin and Whitebrook. Um, and the high school administrators are all on duty up there, they're rotating. Um, and so they're teaching their regular schedule. Um, as they have, it's, it's that schedule that you've seen a couple times now, Marissa. Um, but there are mass breaks built in there and the paraprofessionals are taking the students outside for the mass breaks under the tent. They have little squares that they are standing on to get, you know, take their masks off and have some fun outside. Um, I have not seen their lunch process yet. I was only up there at the beginning of the day yesterday, so I'll probably go at a different time. And they won't be in there at the building tomorrow because that's a Wednesday. Um, but they'll be back on Thursday and Friday, so I'll probably go at a different time. And um, but I think that, I talked to the building administrators yesterday after the first day and they said it went really well. They were meeting with the teachers in the afternoon. Um, so I think it's going well and I think they're, for the most part, they're modeling the schedule that they've had in remote learning.
Laurie? Can you answer the question we received? Cause I also had the same question of how these little ones are using the high school bathrooms?
Sure. We um, we have the um, the bathrooms that are close to their classrooms. We've chosen classrooms that are right near the bathrooms. And they have, we've ordered stepstools. Um, and we have stepstools. Um, we're utilizing primarily two sinks, I think there's four sinks and four bathroom stalls in each of the restrooms. We're utilizing um, two in each, every other one, so that they can be distance and then every other sink. But they have their little stepstools to use. The blowers, the hand blowers are obviously off because we don't blow any air. Um, so they have their paper towels and everything that they can use. They have um, they, they sanitize their hands before they leave the classroom. Then they use the bathroom, wash their hands, but then they have to sanitize their hands upon re-entry. Because they can like touch walls and things on their way back to the classroom. So um, that's what we're using.
What about toilet seats? Just because they're littler kids? Just curious if that was solved?
Um, we decided not to do that. We don't have that in the elementary schools right now. And we have regular toilets.
I'm so impressed by all the details that you've worked out. I truly am. And I'm sure the community can hear all the details and the logistics that go in to every single part of the day, just astronomical. So thank you so much, Dr. Leclerc.
And I will say to, to Maren's, to Maren's comment, I will add that we're using the Tiny Tots classroom up at the high school for preschool. And that has a little people bathroom in it, in the class, that's a beautiful classroom that was designed for the high school child development class in the Tiny Tots. So it has all the small furniture already and the little bathroom and the little sink and everything in there. So that's our preschool classroom up there right now.
Thank you. Shannon, did you have a question?
No, I actually just wanted to answer Allison's original question. We said at the beginning of a quarter, somebody could make a change to their schedule.
Right.
Wanted to put that out there, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, because I was going to reinforce, I don't want people thinking that they have to wait till February first. So I just wanted to make sure that was cleared up. So thank you, Shannon. We did say it.
I wanted to share something else with you, so I'm going to put up a, I put up an Excel spreadsheet, but can you see it? Or do I need to stop sharing and start again?
We have the survey right now only.
Sure, because the other thing that you were curious about last time was attendance in remote learning. So I had um, our data person run this report. Can you see this now?
Yes.
Let me see if I can make it a little bit bigger, because I know these numbers can look a little tiny. Um, okay, so I will start with Maple. What you, well, I'll start up here so you can see, uh, average daily attendance. Um, attendance percentage. So this is, we're starting with the high school, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Grade thirteen is for some of our special needs students that, that can stay in our educational program until they reach twenty-two. So you can see that our attendance percentages are, you know, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-five percent to up about, around ninety-seven percent um, on a daily basis at the high school. Which I think is great attendance. It's actually, I think um, hi, I don't want to, I don't want to jinx it, but I think it's higher than it normally is when we're in persons. Um, I know it's definitely higher at the middle school, uh, where we're running ninety-six to ninety-eight percent daily attendance. And just keep in mind, we take attendance every period. So um, at the high school and the middle school, we take it all during the day. At Center School, we're running between about ninety-four point eight to uh, ninety-eight point seven percent attendance. Um, at these grades, you're going to see, we, I, I did ask the um, administrators for some anecdotal comments and they said preschool and kindergarten, they've had a little bit more absences. But that's, I think, you know, they're harder to keep engaged on the technology for long periods of time. And um, so the, the principal, the classroom teacher keeps in touch with families. Um, and so at Pepin, pretty much the same, ninety-four to about ninety-seven point six. And at Maple, you can see right there, our preschool is seventy-seven percent. But that's, that's to be expected, you know, that's okay. Um, you know, as we can get these students back in person more, I think it will be better. And you know, our other grades are doing well, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, um, ninety-five to about ninety-eight percent. So I wanted to share with you that information. Um, we do, anecdotally, the principals have told me in one of our buildings, they, uh, I asked them for some anecdotal um, comments and they said, we have one student that we um, that has not participated in school this year. They have filed with um, DCF, they filed a CRA with the um, go, the courts. And so, you know, and they're in touch with the family. They're, they're communicating with the family as much as they possibly can. You know, we um, the principals are bringing students that they have concerns about that have some attendance challenges to their student support team weekly meetings to troubleshoot how they can engage with these students. So they're doing all the same kind of things that they would do if they were in person. They're, you know, sending attendance letters, they're having meetings with counselors and staff. They're reaching out to the families. So it's all the same kind of thing. So, does anyone have any questions about that?
Maren?
Uh, I don't actually have a question on attendance, so I thank you for that numbers. I don't know if there's somebody, if there's a question on attendance, I would let somebody else go, but otherwise I have a different question.
No, I'm good. Anybody else? Okay.
So um, the, the different question that I have is, uh, and definitely thank you for the attendance information. That's really great. And like you said, those numbers are probably higher than uh, normal attendance. So that's um, a good, good start to the year. Um, my, my question though is about some of our in-person classes, so to sort of revisit that a little bit. I know that we had originally tried to um, roll out our special populations program. Um, but a couple, I believe it was Rise and Sore, uh, unfortunately had to be um, uh, pulled back and, and uh, postponed in terms of our ability to do in-person for those students. Um, due to staffing, um, cause there are a possibility that you can give us a little bit more of a update. Uh, is any change in that status or?
Yeah, we are, we are anticipating bringing those programs back November fourth. Um, which is right after the election. Um, so we have um, tried to think creatively about our staffing. We have um, been thinking creatively about how we are advertising for positions. It's very difficult right now to find people for jobs, but we have um, we have made a few new hires and we reassigned a few people that we feel are going to adequately um, be able to serve that program in the way it needs to be. It might be a little bit of a domino effect, you know, some more veteran people may end up in that program. And then we put the newer people where they need to be, but it's all, we've got a plan in place at this point in time. So that program should, both of those programs should be starting on November fourth. But I think that you raise an excellent point, Maren, and I think it's worth saying, when we're talking about how fluid um, the situation is with COVID, you know, we have to be flexible in our thinking. Um, we don't have substitute teachers. We have very few. I think um, Cindy and Laurie would probably attest similar in their districts. We are looking for um, building substitutes. We do have one at the high school where we're struggling greatly to find someone for any of our other buildings. Um, but if teachers go down because of illness or even because of, you know, maybe their child has to quarantine for fourteen days. It could totally shut our programs down. So, you know, we have to, we have to, again, I go back to, we have to have grace, you know? And um, we'll, we'll do the best we can, but if something happens in a program like that, a highly specialized program, we may not have staff that can flexibly go in there. So we might need to take a pause, stop for a moment, recalculate or, or, or put our heads together and plan for it. And then bring people back when it's safe to do that and it's appropriate to do that. But we may run into that for the remainder of this year because with this disease, with this virus, you know, um, and if we're, if we're doing it right, if we're dealing with the virus correctly and people are contact tracing and quarantining and doing all the things they need to do, then we might lose people for fourteen days, so.
That just happened in a neighboring district before the elementary school even opened up. Because of three cases, then they had to contact trace. And then the elementary school slated to open could not open for another two weeks.
It has nothing to do with the virus within the walls of our school or with anyone in our school necessarily being exposed. But it has to do with the course of the virus and how, you know, we need to be flexible.
So.
Um, okay, go on, Maren. I'm just wondering, because we have mentioned in our COVID response team, the possibility of also opening up learning centers at the high school. So before we get these other grade levels back, those families that are struggling, the families that have issues um, having their children do things remotely. They may be there, but maybe they're not being successful. That I'm very happy to know that Dreah Marx is helping people with technology. That was something we planned for and I thank her for doing that. But I'd also um, like to still continue exploring. And if we have to put it on the agenda to bring it to a vote, because we had said we didn't have to do that, that you were moving forward and then you said recently, maybe we do need to bring it up. So that's why I'm bringing it up again. It's been an ongoing issue that many community members want to see open, some type of learning center.
I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because I did want to bring that up tonight, you know, I am, I am seeking consensus on the direction you want me to take on this. My, my team, my administrative team is developing criteria for bringing students in to a learning center. You know, who would qualify, who would be eligible? So we're looking at that. Um, I do conceptually have space for that at the high school. Um, so I could make it work. Um, we have been thinking strategically about staffing um, that we could utilize in that space. But I would like to know that I have the support of the majority of the committee before I start um, reaching out to the community around that. So I am looking for direction on that.
Well, you just seemed to say everything was win-win. I know that may not be the consensus, so you know how I feel about it because I'm the one who brought up the subject back in July, so. Maren?
Can you just clarify in terms of space? Uh, and we, I was also hoping you, you've obviously talked about the first grade survey. Um, and so just wanted to clarify that the space for remote learning centers would not reduce our ability to bring in the first grade.
That's correct. So we are tentatively thinking about the high school um, library media center as our learning center. Um, there is a, that is a large room. And then there is a, there is a, uh, there is a classroom attached to it that we could also use. So we're thinking of dividing the area like that classroom might be for predominantly older students. You know, for either half day or a full day. And then the larger area would be for younger students. Um, so that is an area that we are tentatively thinking of for the remote learning center. Um, and if we bring first graders back and they begin at the high school, they would take over classrooms that are currently located on the um, third floor of the building. So we have special ed programs primarily on the first floor of the building and preschool. All our kindergarten um, classrooms are all right next to each other on the second floor of the high school. And we would probably put the first grade up on the third floor of the high school. So that would not um, prevent us from having a remote learning center.
Excellent.
And, and how many students do you think you could fit into that media center and classroom?
Well, we're thinking about half day versus full day, you know, if You know, if we did half day, could we double the amount of students? You know, some students may want, only want a half day. Some students may want a full day. So, um, we would probably, the way that we phrased it to our administrators was to think about the four or five most struggling students in their buildings. And how we could get those students the support they needed. So if we kept it to a very small percentage, you know, just those couple of students per building, just to really get them, uh, the support that they need. I think we could keep the program at around twenty, probably fifteen to twenty or so. If we needed to go more, we would look at, you know, another class. There are still a few empty classrooms that we could utilize, um, in the building beyond that. Um, in addition, Champions is something that is still on our radar. We have tentatively thought about one or two classrooms that Champions could use at the high school. They just had a change. They were in the process of moving forward with this, but they just had a change in their area manager. So that kind of, um, slowed their process down a little bit. The new area manager just reached out to me and I have a meeting with her on Thursday of this week to talk about how to proceed with that. So that could be another avenue worth exploring. So that's where we are with that.
I think, go ahead.
I don't know if this question should go to Dr. Leclaire or to you Cindy. Um, but I'm wondering if we have a timeline in mind for voting for bringing back, um, for making a hybrid option available for first graders. And then, um, looking out even beyond that, do we have a process or a timeline in place for making future votes toward any potential changes? I understand that we can't anticipate what metrics look, might look like in the future. It might very well be that the vote simply affirms that we want to stay where we are. But it seems to me like it would be useful to have, you know, official sort of checkpoints where as a committee, we are, you know, formally registering our position on, on where we are in, in the hybrid to remote spectrum as it's unfolding.
I, 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 I'm wondering if Sue wants to weigh in. My sense about the learning center is that we have talked about it so often. I, I think, do we need a, an official vote on this? And does it have, it's not my, it's not the vote that I'm wondering. Do we need to put it on like next week's agenda for the learning center and for, um, and for the first grade? I don't think we can do it tonight is my sense. That's what I'm trying to say. Sue, am I right?
If you're looking to vote, I would put it on the future agenda to vote.
Yeah. Okay. That was my sense. I mean, we've talked about it, but I, we haven't taken the official votes. It's not on the agenda. I would say we put it on the very next one and we put both of them. First grade in learning centers. But can Dr. Leclaire get a sense so they can move forward and maybe not open it until? Because I feel that if anyone has anything negative, they should say it so she hears that right now. Because it's something that I'd like to vote on and if we do pass it to get this open, because I was hoping to have this opened in September and we're approaching November. And I don't know why we're dragging our feet to provide support to families that are in need of it, especially with administrators identifying students who are struggling. So. And I had thought that it came up before. I'd love to look at the minutes. And we had decided that we didn't need to vote on it. That and the tents, it came up at the same meeting, two of my topics that I kept on bringing up. So we could go back and look at that. I remember clearly I was hoping for a vote back at the beginning of September.
All right. I, I think you know, I also have been in support of the idea of a remote learning center, particularly targeting those students in most need. Um, I, I, since you've asked us to express any concerns that we have, um, my biggest concern is really legality around equity, um, unless it's operating on a lottery system. I would just want to be sure that we are, um, operating within legal frameworks. Because, you know, it can be one thing if an administrator identifies a student as in need, but a parent at home might say, well, my child is in just as much need. And so we have to have some kind of system for deciding appropriately who has access to those centers.
And I like that a lot. We had talked about a lottery. We, we did. So maybe there could be a double system where we could have those that the administrators feel that there is a need for. But you know, that doesn't always mean that those families are going to want to send their child in. So.
They're developing criteria.
Yeah.
Right now.
And, and I would add to that. I, I, I think also some of my concerns, um, I would say would are addressed by your ability to have that space uh, and not have it being impacting the ability to use classrooms. So I think that that's certainly been one of my concerns. Um, also having it on our campus and staffed by our staff is also one of the other uh, biggest concerns I've had with this from the very beginning. So, um, in general, the directions that I'm hearing you going along with the other questions that have been raised by Marissa, um, in particular, I think are, uh, as long as that is addressed within the criteria that you are developing with your administrators. I think it's, I think this is a great thing, um, and can be really useful. Um, and maybe it's also the possibility, I mean, I, of course, there's different ways to do it. Um, so I, I would wait for you to report back on it, but there is the way to, you know, you could have a single cohort that's everyone sort of there and getting four days in the building, or you could also look at doing the sort of more hybrid model where they get two days a week. Uh, and so then we might be able to get forty students in there, uh, into that space. So I just would look at both of those different models, um, and figure out, uh, you know, particularly to Marissa's legality question and equity question, um, to look at how we'd be able to offer that uh, to students in need and into parents in need. Um, there, there's both sides of that.
Dr. Leclaire, could you put out a survey this week so we can get some sense from families who would be interested? And have the wording be, as Maren just said, either a half a day model, a hybrid model, two days a week? Like what they would be thinking. And then we would know if there would be a need to have some type of lottery. So it would be equitable and get a better sense from the administrators in their buildings, who they feel directly would benefit from it. And maybe those numbers will all come together and we can move forward on this quickly with a vote the next time.
I can, I can work with my team. Try, my, my hesitation is, this is really for, this would really be for the neediest students. And, um, because we can't have that many students in there, it would not be a childcare option. So, you know, I would want, I, um, I, I need to think about that with my team. About how we can phrase that and what we can, a survey or maybe something we can do. But I will work on that.
Cindy, can I raise another question? I, I mean, I know that we've, you know, Sue just weighed in and said, maybe we need to wait to put it officially on our next meeting, um, so that it's on the agenda. But I mean, this is, we've been talking about COVID. We've been talking about our students, um, you know, waiting to the next meeting is, November tenth, and that's a week and a half or two weeks before, um, you know, Thanksgiving break. I mean, if we do that and then still have to give several weeks for Dr. Leclaire, the administrator to sort of put all the pieces together, um, there's no way this is happening until after Thanksgiving. Um, and so, you know, I would question our ability to not, not simply to move forward with the potential for votes, um, tonight so that we can move forward on, on all three topics. I feel like we've got, you know, that could give her direction for her team to be working on. We've got the question of remote learning centers. We've been talking about first grade for a while. We just heard about a survey about first grade. Um, and then the other is, is a general hybrid model and just even just putting a date further out for us to start looking at and to start actually working towards. Um, I, I, I would advocate that we should be able to take those votes and, and be able to move forward and give her and her teams and teachers and everybody involved, students, parents, teachers, everybody the ability to move forward with the ability to head in that direction. Um, obviously there's many different pieces that still to be worked out. We're working on having our buildings tested, um, to look at air quality. We've got the MOA that we're still working on with our, uh, union. Um, but I would certainly think that it's time for us to be able to put some dates on things to give us some direction and momentum to move towards.
Yeah. I think that's exactly what I was trying to say before, Maren. Um, because we seem to have a process where we talk about it abstractly and then we have another meeting a couple of weeks later and talk about it a bit more concretely. And then we have to put it on the agenda for the next time. And so there become these long lags in time. And so, um, if we kind of schedule out some votes for the remainder of the school year, knowing that we might need to move some up or move some back or simply vote. We, we might have consensus vote that we're not changing anything on that day. But at least it gives us a little bit more, um, of that kind of like nimble navigation of wherever we are at that, at that moment.
Well, I can, this is what I would, this is what I would say, um, a couple of things. You know, I think I've, I think I've made it clear that I am all for bringing more students back to in-person classes. I would, I would love to see the first graders there tomorrow. But you know, it, it will take, from the time this committee says yes, it will probably take a good three weeks before we can have students, come in as a result of that. Because there are, you know, there's the staffing, there's the busing, there's getting the classrooms ready. Remember, you know, and this is, I think people, you know, part of the frustration that people have, you know, why, you know, why isn't this moved faster? Well, we have to move everything into a new building because we can't use our regular building. So the teachers need to get acclimated to the new building. They need to get training in the technology in the new building. I mean, everything just is so much more cumbersome because we have to relocate to a new building. So I was just looking at a calendar where we're, you know, pushing up against, um, the holidays. I think it's, I think we all see that looming in front of us. So then it becomes, you know, a question, um, you know, do we want to bring first graders back at the beginning of December and have them in this school for three weeks? And then, you know, in my mind, I'm hoping that we can go into some of the other schools after the first of the year. So then we have to move everything back into the other buildings if that's a possibility. So all these things are, um, straining, are, you know, this, this, the building consideration is an added piece that other communities are not dealing with. They're bringing back grade levels in the buildings that they were originally in. When we start shifting everything into new buildings, that presents an extra added layer. So I just want to put that out there. If I had my brothers, I'd have kids in the buildings right now. I think, um, you know, and we can have our discussion about metrics and I know strongly how you feel about metrics, but we are not a community that has been in the red for a ver- predominantly long time. I think maybe we were red one week. But we have been unshaded, we have been green, we have been yellow. According to the state guidance, you know, uh, I, the commissioner had a call with us today in which he said, only the communities in the deepest, darkest red shouldn't, should be in remote learning. He said, even communities in, and I know Laurie, I know you don't agree with that.
Do not, please. I mean, they're taking the commission word like gospel.
Yeah. And he had his, he did have his thinking, you know, there is, um, there are a lot of communities across the state that are in red. I think you'll all attest to that. We see the maps. And those communities are in hybrid learning. And the transmission rate in the schools, even in communities in red, the transmission rate is low because the schools are doing what they're supposed to do. If you're mitigating risk in your schools, then you should be able to operate even if your community is in red. That's his, that's his thinking. And so I'm just, I'm just saying that, and I think it's fair to say, and the mayor is more, she's more in the know than I am on these things. But I think it's fair to say, what I am hearing is that even if the state went to some kind of closure, schools would not be closing at this point. Schools would not be part of that. They would be open.
Okay, but let's, let's look at the numbers also that have gone up since schools did open. And you, there's no way scientifically to prove that the numbers are not going up because of transmission in schools because that age group is asymptomatic. And you are now quoting a call with somebody who is not science-based. Our commissioner has no idea, right? And I would like you, I, I'm asking you as a member of the COVID response team to please contact Megan Harvey this evening or tomorrow. You've had a long, busy day and ask if we can publish her metrics. Because she shows that with the percentage that we should still be remote. That's, that's, it was very clear. And to quote Riley, who is putting teachers at harm, students at harm, is something I can just not sit back quietly and listen to. And I think this community knows that.
Oh, I, 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 I think everyone, yeah. I think people understand where you're coming from. And I, you know, I think that in addition to Megan, I think the other great resource we have is, is Bree, our health agent, who has just been tremendously helpful in our kind of gauging how to move forward in the community. And, um.
We should be science-based and that's, that's important.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. And actually I put forward some new metrics this week to Megan and Bree, that I wanted them to respond to around scientifically basing our return to school on actual health metrics and data that we could present to the union as another option because we're still in the midst of all that. So yeah, I mean, I, I don't, you know, I just want to make it clear that I would love kids to be back. But, you know, I am challenged by running out of room. I'm challenged by running up against the, the holidays. And, um, and just utilizing the high school is just all those added pieces of moving staff, moving furniture, moving everything, supplies, you know, so it just, it just adds to the whole shifting.
I'm sorry, I've had to.
And reading a lot of feelings of state. I'm sorry. I'm. Marissa, computer problems. Marissa, go.
Sorry, I've had to turn off my, my camera here, but, um, I was wondering, you sort of, um, the question of the, the metrics at this moment aside, I'm wondering if we could talk more about, um, the future of our building use? Um, if I could hopefully get some clarity personally, and I imagine people in the public are interested as well. What standards are we holding our buildings and how do those compare to what other public school districts are, are, um, operating under in the state? How do our buildings compare to other school districts' buildings? How do those standards compare to, um, other non-educational buildings or private school buildings? You know, I'm just trying to like, understand our order in relation to the bigger picture. And what that means for the future of our ability to continue to, um, expand options for students.
Nicole, Mayor, do you want to, do you want to start on that one? I don't want to take anything away from you.
I mean, as far as the, um, the standards and, and looking at all the, the different standards, it's the, you know, reason why we have an RFQ out. Um, the request, you know, for a quality proposal for all of our buildings. Um, I will say that we have, uh, I will, just because it happened. The, um, the RFQ that we put out, we were going to put out originally was for all public buildings and reviewing them. The, the way the proposal goes to the state and it involves energy efficiency as well. We did remove the four buildings that we won't use by the year 2023. And we will get those, like already contractors are coming into, um, the buildings that we are going to look for air, uh, improvements and energy efficiencies. At the same time, we're, uh, just trying a, a pilot of, uh, these tripa-hepa filter. tripa-hepa filters with ionization inside boxes. You can, they're, we have them for early voting, we have them on the middle floor, 50 pacing and are pulling data to see what they do. We figure 50 pacing has no windows at all, so we could get a good sense. They've been used for the last couple of weeks. Our buildings compared to other buildings, you know, I think our, well, Commissioner Riley made this point to me, that he worked in Lawrence and he, and they have very old buildings. And his kids went to school in Boston and they have very old buildings. We, I, I think I took two exceptions to that. The one, that was before COVID. So what was okay, maybe is not. And I think it's easy to say on this call that all of our schools air quality, while acceptable, needs to be better. And we saw some health data, especially out of Maple Street School around rates of asthma. And that's not unlike the rest of the, the state. And then the other is, is just a, a, a reality that, you know, Superintendent Leclerc said over and over again, you know, COVID-19 is fluid. We are, we're not managing this, this virus. We're not controlling it. We're not mitigating it. We're just hanging on for dear life. Literally, dear life. And, and an issue I do have about our buildings being open at all, even if they were brand new, would be children are asymptomatic. And so when someone says to me in the face of an epidemiologist from MIT, well, it's okay, the kids don't get sick in school, I want to say something much stronger. Then it's like, well, great. Why don't you try to explain that to a kid who didn't get sick in school, but isn't going to see his mom at Thanksgiving because she's in a COVID ward? Like, that's so crude to say out loud, but that's just what it is. And not, there is not one person who can tell me different, that that wouldn't work, that that couldn't happen. So I, you know, the, the buildings, are we going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into four buildings that will hopefully not be ours? One is definitely getting torn down. And remember, when you're talking about these levels of filtration, it's not that there's a filter that keeps everything out. It's filtration is just one part of it and the HVAC and, and windows open and, and whatnot. So we face a lot of the problems that other districts do with older buildings. There are a lot of other districts and communities who have older buildings, but have kept them up or they have been restored over the years because they weren't able to buy, to build a school. So I think every building, and, and I told the commissioner this when I talked to him, I don't know, maybe a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, it's all a blur. And I was just like, look, you know, our numbers are low. And if you look around the state and the country, when you change one thing in the demographic as far as social freedom, your numbers go up. Like, so clearly there's some things we're doing that we just need to do. And, and that's, you know, I, I, do I think what's, do I think using the high school as much as we can in the way that Superintendent Leclerc and their leadership team is using? I think it is, it's fantastic. I commend them for it. I think that if we can do something temporary for air quality in other buildings, even a small part of it with portable units, if something more substantial can't be done, then we're going to do it. But, you know, we, for good or for bad, this city is at a place of piecemeal as far as their public buildings. I mean, there's no good time for an epidemic, but when you look at what it's doing to our physical plant, COVID on top of what, you know, we're replacing two-thirds of our school system, this is tough. I mean, I, it can't be stated more. And I mean, I, I hear too from, I see the emails and, and the wonderful suggestions. And I read the snarkiness and the meanness and the, the hopefulness and also please don't ever, you know, all, all of the, 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 you know, all the in-between, but we're the ones on this call that have the most information, right? And, and it's, it's not a sunshine picture of what we have to work with. And that said, what we're doing with what we have is super impressive. So I, buildings are close to December and I have no promises what happens on January 1st. But we are getting the, the RFQ, the, the experts are coming into the, have been in and out a couple of the buildings. And, and priority will be space, making space safe for school kids.
Laurie, you're on mute. Okay. I'd like to bring up, because it was brought up by Dr. Leclerc and the mayor and Marissa, alluding to being able to bring back populations in between Thanksgiving and Christmas. I've actually been doing a lot of reading and that's actually such a dangerous time to start bringing a mix in because of family holiday plans, because even though families are advised to not get together with that timing, if you bring in a new population with the students as well as the teachers and then they have to go and be with, whether it's for the winter holidays or Thanksgiving in between, it just, with contact tracing and getting exposed, it's just very dangerous with that timing in between the holidays. Darren.
Thank you. So I guess I would just point out a couple of different pieces. So I, I think that a lot of different points are important. I think that we're very clear that health metrics need to be determined to be safe. And so that that will at any point, even before we have an MOA in place with the Union, if we feel like the matrix are listing things as unsafe, then our programs can be withdrawn and removed. Reaching to that sort of fluidity that Dr. Leclerc spoke to. So I think that our ability to set some places, set some dates in place to work towards is not saying that we're then going to force either our teachers or our students into unsafe situations. But it does allow us to start to plan and start to set sort of a goalpost for us to be working towards. And I think that that's something that's important for our parents, for our students, for our teachers and for our community in general, to be able to start having a little bit of sense of where we are, where we could be going with still in a daily, weekly eye towards that matrix and making sure that we feel comfortable with actually implementing our program. You know, if metrics go up and our numbers go up and we've got to pull out of our current programs, we're going to close our current programs down. But I think that for everyone's sort of vision, I, I do believe that it would be helpful for us to have some goalposts for all three of these programs, for first grade, for remote learning, for, you know, even potentially hybrid, which obviously there's some big pieces there. One of the things that I think would be helpful to bring into this conversation, because as the mayor stated, the RFQ that she's working on no longer covers our school buildings. And so actually what we've been doing is working with Colliers to bring them in. They've already done their phase one review of our buildings and given us all the information there. Dr. Leclerc spoke to that previously at a previous meeting. And the next steps are them coming into our additional buildings and doing a much more thorough review of each of those buildings, doing airflow testing and all of those different pieces. So that's going to be an important piece that I think, again, we can still set goalposts and then have more information to be able to then determine whether or not those goalposts work anymore or need to be withdrawn or pushed further out. But I think that still, and those, all of those different testings and reviews are going to happen over November into December with sort of building by building. So I think if I believe the under timeline has the high school and even maybe Whitebrook before the Thanksgiving break, but, and then some of the elementaries in early December. So that's another important information piece that would be giving us the safety and health information about our buildings done by experts. And so that then we're not having to be the experts and determine that, we'll have that determination by experts giving it to us.
Jonathan?
So I hear you bringing it back around to sort of the original, or the last question at hand here, and I'm going to try to take it the rest of the way. I, I appreciate everybody's comments to this point. And so first, the topic of remote learning centers, which I feel like we've discussed previously, whether or not we need a vote on that. Clearly, a lot of work has been done already to move forward on that. And it seems like we have a consensus here that we can move forward with that without necessarily taking a vote on it. As far as.
I, I agree.
Great. As far as hybrid as a whole, well, short.
I, I would just still say, I mean, I guess I just question not needing a, a date, a goalpost for us to be working towards. I mean, providing that for students, providing that for the community. Dr. Leclerc, I don't know, I mean, is, is it helpful for us to put a date that we'd like to see that up and running? Or with, it sounds like we would like criteria, a little bit more clarity on the criteria for that, possibly at our next meeting, which would be November 10th. But is that something that you think you could have up and running before Thanksgiving? Or you see this as something after Thanksgiving? I mean, we're, you know, just, I don't know if we need to put that goalpost for you or provide it.
So I see, I see this, that this could begin before Thanksgiving.
Which would be great.
Okay, so excellent point. I was thinking more in terms of dates for votes as opposed to a date for an actual inception of the program. So very good point. And perhaps at our next meeting, we could have some more concrete information about that date. As far as hybrid in general, because that's clearly a part of this conversation, Marissa was asking about it. Given, you know, the complications of our buildings and the MOA and the, the mayor's current stance on the buildings being open in the city. I wonder, you know, as we try to talk about setting a date to reflect on things, I think the point that Laurie made about the holidays is, is very well taken. And would folks agree that, you know, after the calendar year, it would make sense to set that as sort of a, a goalpost for us to check in about it and see, you know, the feasibility of it and talk about that at that point?
If I could just chime in, I would, you know, if, in my thinking, I would love to see if metrics allow us bringing more students back in a hybrid model after the new year. And so to do that planning, I would like the committee to visit the, visit the issue in December because there's planning that needs to happen. My, my rationale for doing this is as Maren said, we're, we're having more detailed air quality assessment done in the buildings. And we're getting individual reports after each building is done. And we can, if we need to make some purchases to enhance air quality like room filters, room filtration systems or purifiers. What we're hearing is that there's probably like a six-week lead time to order those things. We're starting to look at the models now and we're starting to plan some purchases now so we can have them in place if we get the go-ahead to, to move into the other buildings. And so while I don't, I would love to say, I'd love to invite all students back in a hybrid model. I'm not sure we'll have access to all buildings, so we may need to thoughtfully scale it.
Right, so that, yeah, so that would bring me to the third thing that we've kind of been discussing was the first graders, which I feel like if we were to discuss full hybrid in December, I wonder if it would make sense at that point to talk about just the first graders. I sort of pose it to everybody, this question, but that seems like something we should have a vote on. And I do question whether or not we could vote on it without having it more explicitly in the agenda.
Right. My hope is that we vote on it on the 10th, would it be feasible to start them also pretty quickly? Learning centers and first graders?
Not as fast as, as learning centers.
One week longer? What do you, what do you imagine?
Our, our thinking has been, and in negotiations, the Union has articulated, they're looking for at least three weeks. And I think that.
So that would be December 1st.
I could begin to put the plans in place before we have a vote from this committee. I mean, we, we're talking the transportation, we're talking the furniture, we're talking the staffing. So I could begin to get all that in place. But I think it's going to take at least three weeks from the time you tell me to go.
Shannon? Okay, I, I know I've been really quiet this meeting and, and I've been listening very carefully. I'm going to be honest, why aren't we ready to just flip the switch? I don't understand this. The other question I have is, have we considered the 25% capacity in the other buildings? Now that we have numbers of how many first graders want to go back to hybrid, we have 50% that want to go back. If we do two days on, two days off, we're at 25%.
Well, the 25% is an old metric, is an old data point. The state is at 50% capacity right now.
Okay, but our city, we've, we've talked about 25% all.
Right, with the mayor, right.
Nicole, Nicole, where are you with that?
I'm fine. We do that with other, we're doing it at City Hall at EHS.
50 or 25?
25.
25.
And I mean, the Council on Aging is, is so small. I mean, they have smaller groups that come in, it's under 25, you know, kind, kind of like, you know, the way you work in City Hall. Like, not everyone comes in at once and we stay under the capacity of the air circulation systems.
So, you know, again, I've been waiting for numbers. I mean, do we have the teachers? Do, I'm going to ask the same question again. But I just don't understand, like, I thought we've been working all along to get these kids back in school, to get them hybrid, to get them, you know, I thought we had dates. What happened to those dates that we had? I, I don't understand what's, I, I don't understand what's going on.
We never voted on a hybrid date. That was, that was postponed.
Right.
So instead, what we've been doing is moving step by step with some of the key pieces, special populations, pre-K. And then we expanded that to include kindergarten and start to look at first grade. So there, whatever was, we originally, we actually had in our very first discussions, November 7th was the date that was on the list of dates. And at that time, the vote was taken, that date was left as to be determined as opposed to putting a date of November 7th on it.
Right. I mean, there were a lot of moving parts, so the inability to use the buildings, the need to do certain things to use the buildings, then getting the permission to use the high school. I mean, we're, we're moving as quickly as we can. I would love to see.
You guys have not voted on first grade.
I know.
You voted, you, you approved kindergarten when you approved special populations, Shannon.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah. So you haven't voted on first grade yet, so.
I, I don't understand why we keep moving forward with it.
Teachers would freak out if they heard that you wanted them to start next week. Remember, part of this challenge is negotiations as well. And, you know, without an MOA, there's a lot of nuances that have to be addressed.
And, and that's a reason why I think we don't want to wait further. If there is a majority potentially in this group that would want to move forward with first grade, I don't think we want to wait till November 10th. I think we want to have that conversation. We are having the conversation, but I think we do want to move towards having an actual vote so that we can have clarity for our parents, our students and our teachers and our parents and everybody involved. so that we can have clarity for our parents, our students, and our teachers, and our parents, and everybody involved. And so that all those logistics, so the Dr. Leclerc doesn't start planning all these logistics with the possibility that we're going to approve it. I think we can be strong enough and make a decision tonight and give that clarity about whether it's going to happen or not.
Yeah.
And can it happen in your own schools? So that we don't have to move all this stuff. Now, how many kids want to go back?
Are you asking me a question, Shannon? I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I'm just making a statement. Like, now that we have the numbers, which we haven't had before, we had no idea how many kids we're talking about putting back into school.
Yep.
Now that we know, can I suggest putting them back in their schools that they normally would go to? We're talking 50% of how many classrooms? Six?
Yep.
So the high school is seen as the in-best-shape building. And I think teachers are more willing to go into the high school to begin this than they are necessarily. We have some work to do in some of the other buildings. And I, my guess is it would be easier to get teachers to go into the high school to begin this work. And if we move back, we move back. But, so Marin, are you suggesting that we vote on it tonight? I, I would love to vote on it tonight. Sue, are you saying that, is there a reason why we can't, even if we were to put this under other, to just, if we are all in agreement, that we go forward? Is there a reason why we can't?
I think, well, I think it falls under the.
Open meeting law.
COVID.
Right.
It falls under COVID though, doesn't it?
There's plenty of topics, we, we brought this up many times. We've got it all on our, we've talked about it so many different ways, so many different times. Like, we never put our exact votes on our agenda. It's just, we've got topics that are under discussion, topics that are under the supervisor, the superintendent's updates. And we have votes if we need to take votes. It's not.
That's what I, that's what I think, Sue. Sue, we okay with this? Sue?
Yep, sorry.
We're really pushing, but I do think it's covered under so many different areas.
Then you are the chair, so I would say that you have the decision.
I have the power, huh?
Yep.
Okay, well, then I would say I would entertain a motion to, to talk about, to vote on this stuff. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would suggest it sounds like there's more discussion that we should have before we make that motion, though, to clarify the building that we're talking about doing this. I think up to this point, when we've talked about it several times, we've talked about first grade, as Dr. Leclerc mentioned earlier, going into the high school and being able to have those classes. You know, yes, there's logistics to move furniture and to sort of prepare all those different things. But I think that that's sort of what was been talked about up to this point, and definitely some of the logistics. To have them in their, in the, in Maple and Center and Pepin, there's certainly advantages to that. And there's disadvantages. So those, you know, three of the, two of the three buildings don't have ventilation, air exchangers. And so that's part of what's being tested through December, early December. I would also throw in there that, you know, based on the numbers and sort of the dates that was just roughly thrown out there about us speculating on a hybrid model. If we're saying we're going to discuss that at our, I believe it's a December 10th date, and it could take six weeks for that to be implemented because of purchases and things like that. I mean, we're not looking until February 1st for there to be a hybrid model in place. And so that could mean if we were to vote tonight on a first grade, maybe we get them in there in three weeks, maybe we wait until just shy of four weeks for the week after. I guess, no, well, yeah, we could do three weeks. But that still puts them two and a half months in the high school before any kind of full hybrid model would potentially displace them to a different place. So I, I think that we should have that conversation before we actually make the motion.
And we need to make a motion to move forward with the learning centers because that would be happy to move.
Sure.
Vote on that. But I, we keep on going back and forth. Do we need a vote?
I think we should just, so what I think we should do, if someone wants to make a motion for the learning center, we do that, first grade, we do that. And then on the 10th of November, we discuss the hybrid model.
Okay. I'm sorry if I have tech problems. I move to open a remote learning center in the high school as soon as it is feasible.
Second that, Lori.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote? All right, we'll do a roll call. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Marin?
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle? Whoops, you're on mute.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. Do we have a motion for first grade?
Can we clarify, we're talking high school or in the elementary buildings?
I, I think we should err on the side of caution and say high school.
Yep.
Until we get the reports from the other buildings. And I think that.
I agree.
That kind of follows, that follows what we've been doing with the other.
So then, I would make a motion that we look to start first grade at the high school. Potentially, if we're talking three weeks, that's November 16th, is that Monday? So potentially as early as the 16th. And we can also revisit the health matrix and get a clarity on that to verify that we're all on track on that piece with our November 10th meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion?
I worry about the date. I, I worry about the date being right before Thanksgiving and having families getting together. And I think it's going to result in transmission, having another population there. I mean, I would love to see those first graders. I wanted to see the kindergartners there. I just worry about the timing.
I agree. I agree with you, Lori. But here's what I'm thinking. We've, we've taken very slow steps all summer and early fall. And we've asked the community to keep the numbers low. And we did make it through Labor Day and the end of summer. I'm hoping that we can ask our community to be reasonable with themselves and with each other to keep us safe. Our numbers are fairly low. And how much do we want to get back to school? So my hope is that if we start on the 16th of November, that that will encourage people, that we're making steps forward and we'll continue to keep our numbers. Obviously, if we don't, we're going to have to go back. That's just my opinion. I don't know if there's any more discussion before we go.
It's not the numbers going in, it's the numbers once they're all in the mix and then they're going to see their grandparents for Thanksgiving. It's not that the people aren't doing what they should do knowingly, but then it's just the danger. I just worry about the holidays. I told you, I've been doing a lot of reading about this particular timing. I mean, Dr. Fauci says that nobody should be with anybody if they're planning on going to see family for Thanksgiving. He actually said if anyone is going to mix their bubble with family for Thanksgiving, that you should be tested, be two weeks in quarantine, and then be tested again. He said that on Thursday. I'm just thinking about family safety.
I agree, but I, I think that, that we have that same problem all year long. We're tired of quarantining and they're tired of socially distancing. But we all have to make it through and do that if we have an end goal of getting back into school. My hope is that people will do what we, what we all need to do.
But we're not quarantining if we're putting the kids into school. That's what I'm trying to say. It's right before Thanksgiving. They could be asymptomatic and then they could go see family members. If the first grade families are going to say, we're not going to mix up anyone, we're going to stay in our family bubbles. We're here in East Hampton. I'd feel a lot better saying, go for it. I want to see these kids back in school. I want to be teaching my high schoolers in person. I hate this remote stuff. It's working, but I'd rather be, but I don't want people getting sick. The numbers are going up.
But I agree, but don't we run the same risk with our special populations that are in, and our kindergartners that are in, we're doing the same thing. But they're already there. I'm just saying, we're just going to add to it. That's all. I just.
Well, I think, I, I think that, you know, the idea I'm taking away from Lori, I'm, I'm kind of thinking as we're, as we're talking, is I think it is a good topic for the nurses to disseminate information on to the families. Because as we have been talking about, maybe people are not interested in starting in the hybrid model right now because maybe they have an upcoming trip with family, that sort of thing. But maybe they would be willing to wait and say, I'd like to start after the first of the year. You know, so maybe if we give people some of that information to digest and think about and saying, well, we're, right now, we're putting a value on being with our family, so we're not going to start in the hybrid model yet. You know, I don't know that it's going to impact everyone, but I think it's a good topic for the nurses to present to families for their review.
So, any more discussion? I can't, I think we didn't make a motion on this one. I think that we're ready.
We did.
We're dead. Okay, good. I get lost in all our thinking back and forth. All right, so we have a motion and it has gotten seconded to begin first grade students on November 16th. All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Lori?
Abstain.
Okay, Marin?
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle? Oh, sorry. You're, you're mute.
My apologies. Mayor LaChapelle, no.
Okay, Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. So that is five, one abstention and one no.
And I have one more thing that I just wanted, oh, go ahead, Marin, I'm sorry.
All right, before we get off this topic, so you had, I just want to clarify something. You had said that for next agenda, November 10th, then, we're going to start, we're going to have a discussion point on a hybrid model, the pieces that need to fall into place for that, and possibly putting a date for a goalpost of when we would look at hybrid for our entire school district.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep. Yep.
I have one more thing I just wanted to quickly say on the agenda, snow days. I wanted to announce that we have been given the ability to use, call a remote day instead of a snow day this year. So unless you have significant reservations about it, I will communicate that to the school body that if there is inclement weather, instead of having a snow day that we need to make up at the end of the year, we will have a remote learning day. So teachers will be teaching and it won't, won't need to be made up at the other end.
And the way most districts are doing that is if you lose power because of that snow day, well, then it's an absence. But for all of those who don't lose power, you're able to continue on. Marin, did you have something you wanted to say?
So I think all of us can recall that snow days are sort of one of those wonderful experiences that kids and ourselves have had throughout our entire education time. I think that there is so much already that limits our kids from getting out into nature. And there is something that is so quintessentially New England that is on a snow day, kids get outside. They get out into the environment, they play in the snow. I would hate to see that that would be not allowed so that they could stay for another four to five hours on a Zoom call and get attendance in school. So I, I actually would differ on this. And I think that we should, really still allow us to have school days, have snow days. We have special populations, we have, you know, by snow times, we're going to have kindergarten, first grade. We have students who are coming into our buildings. And I think it would just be logistically easier to say, we can have snow days and we can let our kids get out there into nature.
Lori?
I think we could compromise. I agree with Marin, when this was coming up in the state, I, all of that was going through my mind when we used to pray for those snow days. As a teacher, I still pray for snow days before this. But, and it is wonderful to go out and, you know, make snow angels and snowmen. So couldn't we compromise if there was one big storm, that first big storm? Let them have their snow day. Or how about a half a day where they get the hours in so it doesn't have to go over until June? But then they get the rest of the day, so they get up, they have to be there in school. And then it's like a teacher workshop day so the kids can go out and play. Or the teacher, don't call it a workshop day if the teachers don't want that. But just let it count so they can get to the beach in June, but they can also gain the snow in the winter.
I like that half-day idea. Marissa?
I would just add that I love the sentiment, also totally appreciate the importance of the snow day. I would also mention, just from like the working parent's perspective, working parents are already having to do a lot more managing of their children in their home on a daily basis. And so I think if, you know, we have that scenario where multiple snow days are stacking up and their kids are not in school in any capacity, when they're always home now, it might be an extra challenge on, on working parents. So I do like the idea of a compromise there.
So you like the half-deck?
I will, I will explore if we can do something like that, and if so, how often. And I will get back to you.
Sounds good. Okay, good. School committee, action, we need to do payroll and accounts payable.
Sorry, I always get deep into these meetings and I open up like different notes and then I lose track of my agenda. So one second, this is really annoying of me. Need like a little warning that it's at the end of the meeting.
Sorry.
Coming up. No, where are you? All right, got it. Okay. So I would make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 10/22/2020 in the amount of $520,133.19.
Second. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa, you moved over, so Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Marin?
Marin Goldstein, aye. It looks like we lost Allison though.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Oh, sorry.
And Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I think we lost Allison.
No, she's there. We just lost her picture for two seconds.
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the council payable authorization for payment dated 10/22/2020 in the amount of $196,008.91.
Second. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. Do we have anything under other? No? Yes, Shannon?
Just really quickly, I wanted to mention that I did contact Liz Levandt from MAS C. She said that we can do it through the Equity Steering Committee, the public forum, as long as it's publicly like put it out, out there as an open meeting. So we wouldn't be violating any open meeting laws.
Excellent.
So we have an Equity Steering Meeting tomorrow, and we're going to get going on that. So.
Excellent, excellent. So you're just going to advertise? And, all right, sounds good. Anything, any other other? All right. Do we have a motion to move into executive session and roll call out?
Move into executive session?
Second. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Aye.
And Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. All right, good night, everybody, we are going to move into executive session, we will not be returning. Have a good night.